Now it's on.
No.
Are we streaming?
Yes, sir.
Like it helps. So.
Here we go.
All right. It's six o'clock. Welcome, everybody, to the Villarica Plan Commission meeting. It is April the 2nd, the day after April Fool's Day. And this is a call to order. Do I have an adoption of the agenda?
So moved. Do we not have minutes for the last meeting?
Do we have any minutes or seconds, sir?
Because I didn't have any with the package.
Oh.
Okay. Well, I move approval anyway.
All right.
So we'll do those in the meeting. We will.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda without minutes or seconds?
Hang on a second.
What?
One second.
Yes.
I assume... We're going to be talking about this?
Yeah.
Is it on the agenda? I mean, I don't see it.
That's this one. That's a revitalization plan.
Ah, okay. Got you. Oh, sorry.
No problem. So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes and the second... Without the minutes and the seconds of the agenda. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? The agenda is approved unanimously. Next up is old business, which is the minutes, which we don't have. So therefore, we move to new business, which is ordinance revision.
Good evening, y'all. First item is a text amendment to revise Article Six landscaping buffers and tree protection in our Unified Development Code, ORD-01-19. And I'll tell you briefly why this came about. We've had a local business here, relatively new business, a large business that has a... Probably a three-acre outside storage area. And the business is associated with installing natural gas service lines and main lines for line of gas light, several regional natural gas companies. And we had a request to... By the business's contractor to install a low-voltage electric fence on the inside of their chain-link fence that they have enclosed their outside storage area. And our Unified Development Code only allows electric fences in rural development RD zoning districts, agricultural livestock, horses, you know. We thought that the request was very reasonable, given all the commercial and industrial zoning that we have. So we prepared a text amendment internally to revise the Article Six landscaping buffers, tree protection, specifically Section 6.07B-2. This says electric fences, the Unified Development Code, to provide an effective date for other purposes. The existing code, as I mentioned, electric fences are prohibited except in the RD district. We want to revise that and supplement it with electric fences are allowed in all commercially zoned districts, as well as the rural development district, with the following specifications. And in my staff report, you see the specifications on these low-voltage fences. I've looked at them. We concur with all of them. And based on that, staff recommends revising the UDC, the pertinent section, to include this, based on the application. We have the contractor's representative is present tonight. If you have any specific questions about the apparatus that we're talking about, she'll be glad to come up and answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Now, however we vote, when I mention it, it would be, you know, like to approve this, I would reference Section 6.07B-2. Is that the one that includes the commercial?
The Section 6.07B-2 is the section. We're replacing the current verbiage of electric fences are prohibited except in the RD district to include electric fences are allowed in all commercially zoned districts, as well as the rural development district, with the following specifications. And all of that will go in the code.
Okay. 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 All right.
The... That item, number three, their perimeter wall or fence or wall... And I'm just... This may be nitpicking, but I'm famous with that anyway. No electric fence to be installed or used unless it is completely surrounded by a non-electrical fence. Is that correct? I mean, to me, completely surrounded, we're talking 360 degrees, guys. I mean, above, below, and all sides. But...
This is inside the existing fence.
Sure. Sure, surrounded on one side by an existing fence, but not the backside and the top side and everything else. Okay, well, but it says completely.
Now, I have that same question.
I mean, I think we should say on the public-facing side, or...
I think it refers to the actual perimeter of the... Of an existing fence. It must be on the inside, the total perimeter.
All right, then let's say that. I'm sorry, but I'm just... But let's say what we mean here, really. And that's my only comment about the whole thing. I'm good with it, but let's just make that correction and say that on the boundary line side, that there'd be cut off from the outside world by a fence, another fence. But I don't want somebody to beat us on a technicality because it's not completely.
Well, I will make that correction...
Okay.
...to Bill McClear.
I had that same concern, but also a question, five feet high? Is that... Just five feet high or distance away? My concern, is it five feet high or is it five feet distance separating?
The item five on my sheet says electric fences shall have a height of 10 feet or two feet higher than a perimeter fence, whichever is higher.
Well, I'm looking at item 3A. Says by a non-electrical fence or wall that is not less than five feet. Five feet what?
Yeah. But then that's contradicted down under item 10, under five, where it says it's got to be 10 feet tall.
Yeah. Yes, come.
Oh, and just for giggles, a name and address and...
Cindy Williams, 550 Assembly Street, Columbia, South Carolina, here representing Electric Card Dog. The fence is... That we're saying that the perimeter... That what the code is saying, that the perimeter non-electrified fence needs to be five feet high. And the electric fence is at a minimum of five feet high. And that's... I'm not sure what your zoning allows for fencing. Some zones allow eight feet, some six, whatever. But it's saying it needs to be a minimum of five feet tall to protect the innocent passersby that may walk by. The electric fence, the industry standard for the electric fences is 10 feet. But it's saying two feet taller or 10 feet, whichever is higher. So you have a five, at least a five foot, depending on what your zoning is. You may have... You may allow eight-foot fences in industrial zones. And then, so you'd have that fence, and then you would have the 10-foot-tall electric fence behind it. And it's just 20 strands of wire, horizontal strands of wire...
Oh, okay.
...that are separated by like eight inches or so.
Is there any concern with the voltage of this? Is it like, what, a cattle?
Very similar to that. No, it's... There's no concern. I was just speaking with them before the meeting. I have to touch it about once a quarter. It stings, but it doesn't, you know, cause any damage or burns or anything. It's a 12-volt battery is the primary power source, and that battery is actually charged by solar panels, so it doesn't even plug into the grid. It can't pull anymore. It's very safe. It's safer, actually, than the livestock fences, which oftentimes do plug into the wall.
Can it be shorted out? Could somebody short it out?
Yes, they could cut it. You know, if they bring some insulated bolt cutters, it could be cut, and then it sets off the alarm. It's truly a burglar alarm system, and that's why the requirement for permitting as such. It's truly a monitored burglar alarm system that you have. You turn it on when you come in, you turn it off when you... Turn it off when you come in, turn it on when you leave. It's monitored, just like your home security systems are. And if somebody breaches that perimeter, cuts it or whatever, shorts out that circuit, then it places a phone call to the business.
Okay.
Light them up.
Keep the bad dog out.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or person?
No, I'm surprised we haven't done this before. Seems like a good idea.
Come in handy if goats come up again. Had to get that one in.
I move that we approve this Article Six...
Oh, wait, wait, wait. We got to go through the... Do we do the... Anyone else in favor or against, or...
Oh, yeah.
Since this is an ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. Okay. Is anyone else here in favor of changing this ordinance? Please come up. Okay. Anyone against? Okay. The public section is closed. Do I have a recommendation?
Yeah, I recommend that we... Well, I move that we approve this recommendation for a change to Article Six landscaping buffers and tree protection, Section 6.07B-2.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve this ordinance change and a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries four zero. Thank you, sir. All right.
We...
Oh, and then... I'm sorry. And then you have to be at the city council next week to... Do you know all that? Okay, that's... And it's next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Okay.
Next item on the agenda. I know we sent out... I'm not sure that the agenda got revised. The deed of dedication is originally... It was from WGA Ventures LLC, but it's been revised. It's between Tanner Medical Center, Inc. and the City of Villarica. Tanner has requested that the city entered into a deed of dedication agreement to accept an easement driveway access to the Villarica Public Library as a public dedicated street. They also are requesting one commercial curb cut off that... Hopefully, that will be a public dedicated street. We... The driveway access was established by an easement agreement between Tanner Medical, Inc. and the City of Villarica. That includes the new Villarica Public Library. The easement drive was built to city street standards when it was put in, and certainly capable of being a public street. That is the request. Mr. Gary Thomas with Tanner Medical, Inc. is here to answer any specific questions that you may have. I brought two large plats. I know sometimes the small ones that we print in the packet are a little bit vague, and you can't really see them, but I brought a couple of large ones that will show you the 60-foot easement. Everybody in this room probably has driven on that, going to the library. Based on that, we... Staff has no objections, other than the city council. Our recommendation to them is, you know, when you make that a public street, it needs to have a name. And I understand Tanner has requested some input in what the name of that short-stove street will be. And I'll let Gary speak to that. Basically, that's the second item.
Okay. All right. Any questions for staff?
Yeah. Nothing in the deed talks about the cut through. Is that necessary? The curb cut?
Well, it won't be necessary if it becomes a public street, because they'll, you know, we'll provide them access. I don't see that portion that was left in it when they revised this, so don't really see a need for that. Like I say, if it becomes a public street, then we'll provide them access.
Well, we approved the zoning thing...
Based on it, yeah.
And that included a cut through.
That's correct.
But I just was concerned whether it needed to be stated here.
No. That's a problem. Well, that is definitely a standard practice.
Okay.
We would never allow a business... Never deny them access to, you know, to a public street.
Right. Is there any concern about... Or will we have any comment about where that cut through occurs?
I assume, not speaking for Gary, but I assume it's going to be toward the far end, somewhere in that area.
Where the dumpster is.
Well, or that, or off the side of that.
Will that dumpster have to be moved?
The dumpster is going to have to be moved, yes. And I understand, talking to Mr. Barber, that we are having communications with Tanner as we speak about that.
Because that was a fairly expensive accommodation.
Well, we really need to find a new location for that dumpster. But we'll work those details out.
Okay, again, not part of this, so...
Can we... I mean, I basically am fine with this presentation, but can we ask in the approval that... I mean, if they want to name it for somebody significant to them, I don't have any major objection to that. But so long as we have the right to veto or approve, you know, the final choice, I mean... I mean, let's face it, I don't want it to be called Daffy Duck, you know, street or something.
I think Hannah Back Way would be pretty cool. I was just saying.
Yeah. Old Geezer Street.
Mr. Flowers, that ultimate decision will be city council. And...
Can we recommend, though, that we reserve the right to approve the name? Let them choose it, but...
Well, I don't know that it would necessarily have to come back through, y'all.
No, I don't care. But just so long as somebody here gets a chance to... So that it's not objectionable, you know.
Well, knowing Tanner like I do, I'm sure it will be appropriate.
I feel the same way. I just, you know, covering my bases.
But Gary's here, if you'd like to ask him.
Does it have a name yet? How did I know?
It don't have a name yet. But, you know, if it's going to become public street, it needs to have a name, you know. And that's, you know...
Any concern about the intersection of this new public street and the highway?
Well, I think we all have concerns in that corridor with knowing what's been discussed and what we've got in place, or the lack thereof. I mean, it's certainly going to have more traffic as development occurs. And we're hoping that Georgia DOT will help us out a little bit in coming up with some ideas to help mitigate some of that. I don't know that they'll ever put a traffic signal there. Right now, we're trying our best to get the mini roundabout constructed at Punkin Town in 61. We've been held up on some construction-related issues that we hope to have resolved here in the next few weeks. That certainly will help that situation. But, yeah, we have concerns. I mean, how could you not?
Just don't tie it to that project, because they'll put another roundabout down here. It'll be 20 years before we see it. Just saying.
We all feel the pain.
That's right. Any questions? Do we need to talk to person from Tanner? Are you all good? Good?
I move approval of the deed of dedication as presented, as modified and presented.
Oh, yeah, we need public comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this deed of dedication? Okay, is there anyone here in opposition to the deed of dedication? Okay. All right. The public section is closed. Now, do I have a recommendation?
Move approval.
Move approval. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve the deed of dedication. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Deed of dedication is approved four zero.
The last item on the agenda is the Villarica Community Revitalization Plan. This plan was developed in a partnership with... Between Carol Tomorrow, Tanner Medical, City of Villarica, and the Villarica Housing Authority. Canvas Planning Group put this presentation together, and I hope y'all have your printed version, because Nathan Gallantine is here to present that, the overhead, and y'all can walk through it with your printed version. I don't...
Anybody got a mirror? Or just...
I don't know what the protocol is for you guys.
We got this.
I mean...
You could just say on page two of your packet as your... You know, this would be more for the audience, if you want to do it that way, or...
I thought maybe you might want to see the color version, you know, on screen. But he's here to walk you through it.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. My name is Nathan Gallantine with Canvas Planning Group. And for the commission, just... It's going to start most of the recommendations. We have the public comment, which was around page 11, and then it kind of jumps for this presentation to... Page 28. So you kind of bookmark those two spots. And this is just an overview based off the second meeting that we had. Okay. So the first... Just kind of about the process, first part, collecting data. So all during the fall, we were kind of collecting data, pulling together the past plans that Villarica had, which were really great and very recent. And then we had a big public meeting on January 28th. And so a lot of that was kind of reflecting back to the committee. You know, these are your recent plans, and what we want to do is ask questions. Did you have a quick question?
Yeah. Our agenda item says this is a plan presented by Walton Communities. You're not with Walton.
No.
So... I'm sorry?
They did the study for Walton.
So, yeah, Walton had been working with the Housing Authority, and then Walton had us do the study, kind of do an impartial thing for planning purposes.
Walton isn't even mentioned on any of the revitalization steering committee, other partners, community engagement, or the planning group.
Well, yeah, they are working with the Housing Authority, because all of this is part of an application for a tax credit sort of thing. And so they've been working as a potential... A potential person with the Housing Authority.
Okay.
I guess is, just for giggles, if you want to, for the record, just change that on the agenda online or whatever, just make that correction, who's actually presenting, and that should... Yeah. Keep it up to snuff.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, Walton is not mentioned in the packet here.
That's what I just said.
I mean, anywhere, it's not... It all looks like Carol Tomorrow and Tanner Health System.
And for them, they just... I mean, it's important that they're not... It's an impartial process, and so that's part of the application process for DCA to be impartial in the planning. So we were the planning experts that they hired to kind of look at this area fresh and new. A lot of the areas, and I can talk about it a little bit, you have a lot of great plans in and around, a lot of plans focusing a lot around downtown. But since there was just a lot of development pressure here with the combination of Tanner and the Golden Nugget Trail, it was just a really great idea to be able to look at this particular area a little bit closer and kind of be able to speak to that, so that the community could be a little more proactive in the sort of things that they wanted to see in the future.
Was Canvas hired by Walton or by who?
By Walton.
I'm sorry, who was that, did you say?
I asked if Canvas Consulting Group was hired by Walton.
Canvas?
Canvas.
Oh, Canvas. C-A-N-V-A-S.
Yeah.
Are they... Are you listed anywhere in the packet here?
Yeah, we're the team that put it together on page three.
Yeah, down here in the...
Oh, I got you at the bottom of that. Okay.
Landing group.
Nathan, all right. I got you. And...
Now, here we go.
So we had the... So then after the public meeting, we kind of put... Bring together all of the input that we got. We've got... We had an online survey that we also asked a lot of the same questions. We get all that information together, create the recommendations, working alongside with the steering committee from the different groups that were listed. And then refining ideas and then kind of creating implementation chart. And then the packet that would be... Or in the document that starts on page 36. And so...
I'm sorry, where? 36?
Page 36. We have the implementation charts. And so... Okay, I guess it's... All right. So right now, we're presenting to the public and to Planning Commission, then next week, just kind of reviewing the schedule, so... Okay. Well, I will...
I would... Yeah, okay, so this implementation measures starts off with work with the city, the Villarica Housing Authority, to provide new affordable... Yeah. Who works with the city to provide new affordable housing opportunities? Is that you?
No, the... Well, the city would... The city would work with the Housing Authority.
It says work with the Villarica Housing Authority to provide new affordable housing opportunities. So...
Would that be Walton?
Is that Walton you're talking about?
No. Who... Basically, the way a plan would work was whoever would say, "I want to do goal 1.1", and that's who would take it on. Sometimes that's the city, sometimes it could be Walton, sometimes it could be DCA itself. So it's just important that we put down that... The most important thing is to work with the Housing Authority.
It says the responsible agencies, and all it says is Housing Authority. As a responsible agency.
Well, and affordable housing development partners. Who would those partners be?
Would be whoever would be able to develop affordable housing. So in this case, it could be Walton, if they are selected.
If they are selected, by who?
Well, one would be the city would have to select them. The Housing Authority would have to select them as a partner. But it could be another affordable housing developer. There's others in the state and in the region. So let me... Since the presentation isn't working as well, I can kind of just go through some of the public engagement. So we had a great... Kind of a great snapshot, most people from the area. And I'm looking on page 14 right now, if you want to review there. So we had a great, kind of a great snapshot, most people from the area, and I'm looking on page 14 right now, if you want to review there.
And was the input, the public input, was that generated by public meetings?
Yes, a public meeting, and then we had an online survey as well.
How is that advertised? I never heard of, of the public meeting.
It was advertised in the paper, it was advertised through the Housing Authority, it was advertised online through the local newspaper. We've got a couple snippets in the back, but...
I saw them with the package, but I didn't see them in time to attend a meeting. So it wasn't, wasn't much of a public meeting, it didn't seem to me.
Yeah, I, I mean, our goal is to put it out within two weeks, and so that, that's what we did. So we worked with the, the city just to make sure that we got those out, but I'm sorry if you weren't able to see it. So, good age ranges, a lot of, a lot of redevelopment properties are for a lot of senior housing with fixed incomes, and so a lot of, about 75% of the people that took any of the surveys would, would be 50-plus. And then going down to some core, core things, we had education, and the responses were asked, to what degree do you agree with the statement? So, children in my community have access to good educational opportunities, and the quality of education in my community is getting better. So both very, very positive, mostly agree on those, and then the community kind of talked about some of the obstacles, and so the number one obstacle that prevented access to educational opportunities, people were talking about transportation, lack of walkability to schools, lack of diversity in the classroom, poor choices by parents or students, lack of continued education classes, or vocational prep. And then the next section was health and medical care, and these responses were generally even more positive. Good health and medical care in my community, and quality of health and medical care is getting better, both of those positive responses. And then some of the obstacles that some of the people talked about, preventing access to good healthcare, limited transportation, that was probably the most, the strongest consensus of, of anything that we asked that night, just that that was, that was tough for a lot of people. Affordability of care, and better service for doctors. And then the next part was employment and jobs, having access to good employment and job opportunities in my community, quality of employment and job opportunities in my community is getting better. And this was a little more even of a response, but still slightly positive. Let's see if I can...
This is page 16?
This was, yeah, page 16. So those are, those are the charts there. So, and then some of the obstacles that people in the community were noting, not enough jobs or quality of the jobs in the area, wanting better paying jobs, people having transportation issues, and then some people were saying that a lot of times there's overqualified people in different positions in and around the city, and so that makes it harder for people, that maybe that was the, the job for them, they may have thought. Transportation, a little, a little mixed, but generally positive, good transportation options and quality transportation options getting better. Some of the obstacles talked about, public funding and money, lack of options that are affordable, lack of buses or vans. And then we got into more of the development, I'll move. Access to affordable housing in, in my community, that was strong. I think the new library is an asset to this community, super positive. I think the new Golden Nugget Trail will be an asset to this community, people feeling really good about that as well. And then the last part, I think new road rate enhancements like crosswalks, sidewalks, and roundabouts on Dallas Highway will be an asset to this community, also a positive response there. The number one obstacle, preventing access to good development and/or housing, money, financing, lack of appropriate infrastructure, time, something's taking too long, a lack of affordable housing stock or vouchers. And so those were the, that was kind of the core questions, and then what we did was, looking at your past plans, we came up with some recommendations really specific to this particular area. Let me see if I can zoom through for the people out here, and so we wanted to address affordable housing, that was important in this plan, and it was important to a lot of people that were there. And so the three big recommendations would, to work with the Villarica Housing Authority, provide new affordable...
Now, where are you now?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on page 29. The previous section that you would have looked at would just have been previous plans that Villarica's already completed.
So there's Walton, finally.
And, and some of the people had, I think, visited that particular location. So our recommendations were to work with the Villarica Housing Authority, provide new affordable housing opportunities for seniors, work to provide new affordable housing opportunities for lower income families, and then to zone the area to allow for rent multifamily housing opportunities for lower to medium income families. And so that's kind of that first, we had five key recommendations, the first being affordable housing. The second one was connectivity, the third one was safe streets and crossings, the fourth one was traffic calming, and the fifth was employment accessibility. So we'll go to the second one.
What page was that?
That was on...
Did you just read it, Ron?
Yeah, I'm just, that's on a couple pages before, on page 26 and 27. Trying to balance the audience and... Alrighty, so the next one, connectivity.
What page is that?
That would be page 30, I'm sorry. So what we wanted to do is kind of pull a lot of those ideas together, and this isn't necessarily zoning, but this is more kind of a vision to kind of look at, this is a really vibrant node, and there's a lot of great things that are happening. A lot of things have been informed by the previous plan, like the Golden Nugget Trail that would be coming through, then also just the success of Tanner Medical, and then just the way that the library has just really been a real success in the area. So looking at how we could begin to envision these areas, and begin to look at, how do we connect them even better? So the first recommendation was to connect, make sure that we're connecting the planned Golden Nugget Trail to the major area destinations like the Villarica Library, Tanner Medical Center, and the future Villarica Housing Authority, Old Town Homes redevelopment. The other idea would be to create trail spurs that provide greater walkability and biking connectivity to future housing, civic, retail, medical, and major employment destinations in the area. So that could look like a gravel trail, that could look like a sidewalk, but just make sure whenever possible to connect to this piece of infrastructure that the city's investing in.
From future trails, whenever they may be built.
Yeah, or just making sure that we're connecting into the Golden Nugget Trail, like if you're kind of far away, that maybe there's an opportunity to create a little spur that makes sure that you can safely and easily connect to the main trail that would go around the city. So then the, the third piece, utilize zoning regulations to ensure that future development along the Golden Nugget Trail is designed to maximize bike and pedestrian usability of the trail system. The fourth one being monitor and work with Connect Carroll to look into the feasibility of a circulator shuttle in the future. And if you go into different parts of the plan, we also were talking with, looking at some of the feedback was just that, and even some of the early results of Connect Carroll, that over half of those trips were for medical trips. And so that's really great, but it also shows a great need, and so we're looking at if maybe in the future that there'd be a possibility that Connect Carroll could create a circulator that is, is a regular route that people could utilize, since that's such a popular destination, being able to get to Tanner. So the next page, page 32, we're talking about safe streets and crossings. And so what we just wanted to make sure that we're thinking of is, and I think even people were alluding to the fact that Dallas Highway is seeing more traffic, but we also want to make sure that people are able to safely cross, especially different, different situations, people, there's different age groups and different ability levels, and so we just want to make sure that there's safe crossings, especially getting to the library and to the medical center. So first recommendation, transform key intersections on major roadways into safe, accessible pedestrian crossings through the use of pedestrian crossing signals and countdown timers. And then to install clearly delineated pedestrian crosswalks at all pedestrian crossing sections. And so one of those is obviously going to happen with the Golden Nugget Trail, and so we're also saying that there could be other ones that are delineated in the, the square. We're not saying they have to go there, we're just saying that these are possible places that would make sense because people are going to these areas. And if possible, a textured crossing is nice because it, it lets, it's more visible to drivers, and people realize that there's kind of people using these areas that are a little bit different. So, next one, traffic calming. And I guess we're, you're even alluding to this before, but our thoughts is that look at installing new roundabouts at major intersections to ensure safe and slow movement of vehicular traffic through the area, since more and more people will be using, more people will be walking, more people may be biking, we just want this to be as safe of an area as possible.
So you are suggesting three roundabouts?
Well...
Between Old Stone Road and Punkin Town?
We're saying that these are three areas that could make sense to see them because of just the, the kind of traffic that are there. I guess there's one planned for number three, but, but these would, these would also need to be vetted by an engineering firm. They would be able to do counts and be able to say, well, that works here, or there's too many, or that's just not a great use of the sort of things that you guys are hoping to do, so a lot of these would be vetted, but this, this is just taking the idea that we want to be a more connective area, and we want to be safe, and, and those are the three that are a little larger than the others, and this would ensure a constant traffic flow, instead of things getting backed up like they may be able to, so... Then the, the last section was employment access. And so the first recommendation, zone the area near Tanner, Tanner Medical Center and Dallas Highway to allow commercial medical office and retail uses to continue the growth of the area as a major employment center for the city and the region. And the second one would be, continue to work with Carol Tomorrow to raise awareness of vocational training available to area residents. And so that, that just kind of speaks to some of the, the feedback from the plan, that there was vocational training, but not a lot, some people still aren't aware, and so that's just a process, it's just a recommendation to continue that awareness. And so that image kind of shows all the recommendations together, and then during the process of this plan, we also had just, it just was announced that SE Trans Call Center was relocating to that area right next to Tanner, so that's great news for the area as well, and then...
Before you go, from page 35, the little red shaded area on the must be west side of 61, it looks kind of, well, it says office, but it's kind of narrow, and right there, just along that right of way, is there, and first of all, that, that right of way needs to be widened. Highway 61 is just going to carry more and more traffic. I don't know if you've made allowance for that, but that commercial area there is, that you intend to zone off of that, to me, doesn't seem to be sufficient for much in the way of commercial office. But that touches on another. So since we're talking vision here, let me ask you this, is the current location of the housing project, which you're intending, I guess, here to replace over time, is that the highest and best use for, or is that where we should be locating a public housing facility? And is it sufficient to accommodate the number, the amount of demand that there will be? And especially along a busy highway that's just going to get busier, and wouldn't we be, well, would we be better off to take the old existing site and turn that into commercial? And find a better, still nearby, but better location for public housing where they don't have to contend with increasing traffic and, you know, that sort of thing?
Well, I would say that for something like a public housing, and a lot of this would be maybe mixed income housing, but what you'd, ideally, a lot of these people have, may have issues with transportation, and so being able to walk to a place that they're currently using over half of the trips on Carol, Connect Carroll, or going to the medical center, I think it's a, it's actually a great location for people that have, especially seniors aging in place, and so that's why it's that much more important for us to make sure that crossing Dallas Highway is as safe as possible.
Did you even consider any alternative sites?
Well, we're just looking at kind of what this site is, and that, kind of taking a snapshot of this area. I, I, we've, we're saying that this area down south there is another possible area that could be good, but because...
Down south, where?
On the south of the map, just, it's saying multifamily, that that could be, that's another, you know, possibility, being close, connected into the city, but I think we also want to be sensitive to the people that live on that side of the road. This kind of provides a little bit, can be a buffer to some of the neighborhoods as well. And so I think it's, I think it's a great, great site for it.
But you're talking about tearing down the current housing that's there?
Well, you, what they, what they'd probably, whoever would do it would phase it so that part of it would go, and they'd be, be able to do it in, in different phases.
But you're talking about a tear down and rebuild with high-rise, or more than one level? Housing accommodations?
I'm, I'm sure that, yeah, whoever would do that, it would need to be more than one level. Those are, you know, outdated and, and aren't serving, there obviously is more demand, as you know, that they've shut down taking in. So that's, you know, that's an important thing for the community, so...
Well, along the same area that, that Tom is talking about, what do you do with the existing, you know, medical facility that's already there? Tear it down to make room for commercial office space?
Which, which are you referring?
You know, Willbrook is in that area that's shown with this red...
Oh, that would just stay as, as it is. It's just kind of saying, we, we want the opportunity to, to be able to play off the, what's already there, so it'd probably be medical office, and the commercial would relate to medical, so things that kind of go together and kind of have a synergy with, with each other. And obviously, each of, each of those parcels looks a little bit different, so, you know, we just, we just want to say that we want the city, whoever's looking at it, to make sure that the zoning allows for those sort of things, because we think that that, that makes for a, a better community for everyone that's using this area.
The only thing that I observed on this, I'm fine with most of, you know, what's on here. The only thing that my concern would be is the multifamily off Old Stone Road, because that's, that road is just a two-lane road that I think will be able to handle the medical expansion, but as far as, they would have to be... the medical expansion, but as far as, there would have to be, I think, another road somehow to get that, if multifamily's going down there to get it out, does a dump, a multifamily product or whatever you want to call it there, a subdivision or what have you, that would really jam up Old Stone Road.
Yeah, I think you'd want to, you definitely want, whoever, if someone were to do that, they'd, they'd definitely want to have a-
Route number two.
A through road.
Yeah.
Probably connect down south as well so that there's in and out-
Yeah.
And better flow, for sure.
And I know this is conceptual, but-
Yeah, no, it's a good point.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's not conceptual, I mean, it, what it does, this plan summarizes four current existing plans that the city and the council already have approved. Started with the RSVP plan, we've got the long-range comprehensive plan, you know, it just goes on and on, and the Gold Nugget Trail. Again, so this, this summarizes four existing plans. You must have had a great job as a consultant, you didn't have to do anything.
Well, I mean, it was great to see what all was going on, but I, I think there just wasn't, there wasn't a solid picture of what exactly was going to happen in this particular area, so I think whenever you can go on record and kind of say that, and I, I mean, this particular area is-
Well, I don't see the solid recommendation here.
Thank you, John, yes, I was going to say that myself. I think I'm a long way from seeing a solid presentation or, this is just, in my mind, this is very early conceptual stage without any, without any real representation. That's the reason I brought up the thing about the congestion and redeveloping the multifamily right there on the same spot. I, I think there are a lot of things that need to be considered in there that are not mentioned anywhere in this package, and I think there are other alternatives that should be considered.
But again, we have other plans that I would think supersede this, that we've already adopted.
And none of, none of this disagrees with those previous plans, it just is more-
Oh, no, it absolutely doesn't disagree.
It's more specific to-
All it does is restate those plans. What are, what are we supposed to do with, with this item? Is it something we need to act on, or?
Do we want this recommended?
It's not required, but we want you to see it and hash it out.
In that case, I, I think you're getting your money's worth.
Gentlemen, I would say that I don't know this is necessarily a formal, you know, concept plan or, or plan development, so it is really up to you what you want to do with it, whether you want to recommend it going forward to the council or recommend that the council might approve it or not do anything with it unless, unless anyone on staff disagrees with me.
Is this going to go to council for their approval?
What's that, sir?
Will this go from here to the council for their approval?
Yes, it's all the, the-
Well, I think, I'd like to make some recommendations for planning and zoning.
Well, and, and the most I could do with it, I think, would be to say, "Yeah, we see it, we, we accept this presentation for information and we'll put to the higher authority for them to make a decision about accepting it and moving forward."
Well, I think there are a lot of, a lot of problems.
Yeah.
I think it's not necessarily the right use of the land as proposed, but again, who knows what the council will do.
It's like any recommendation that comes from the planning commission, you have the ability to approve, disapprove, modify.
We have noted that.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Appreciate it, all right. And I guess going along with everything else, is there anyone else who'd like to make any statements about this in, in favor of this revitalization plan? All right, nobody there? Anybody would like to speak against this revitalization plan? Okay, public comments are closed. Do you have a recommendation for the Villarica Community revitalization?
Before we get to that, let me just, can I make a comment as a member of the commission?
Yes, you may.
Uh, could you stop me?
No.
Okay, the-
I'm not that powerful, no.
I, I believe in public housing and having good, well-conceived, well-located developments that serve our population and meet the needs of our citizens. In my opinion, I'm not, I just don't feel this necessarily accomplishes that goal. And so, I, I say that we tell the council that we've reviewed it and accepted it for information and, and it's in their hands now.
Well, it is regardless.
I know, but I'm just saying, don't look to me for a recommendation, though, to pick it up and run with it. I think there are a lot of other concepts that could be incorporated and some other things to consider, and I'd like to see us wind up with a plan that provides considerably more in the way of public housing and affordable housing, and I don't want to diminish the aspect of, of accessibility to, to the hospital or to any of the others. You know, people who live there have to go get their groceries, they got to get their, go to their drugstore and do all other kinds of things, and so, I, I think that, I think, I just think we can do better than this.
Well, I, I don't agree with anything you're saying. I was on a tour that we took of the Walton Industries.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not speaking against Walton whatsoever.
Walton is an excellent organization, they develop very good public housing, if that's the right word for it, but I just don't see if Walton funded this, much of their input into it. I, I see the need for this, but it bothers me that we're going to consider tearing down existing public housing, and what are you going to do with those people that are there? And for Walton or whomever to come in and to build this new facility, you're talking years. I mean, that's not going to happen next year. So, I, I just, I, I guess I, I want to say I don't like this plan, but this plan is really a summary of four or five existing plans that the city has already approved.
Right here.
Yeah. So, I don't know what it brings to us or the council, other than saying, "Hey, we've reviewed your plans that you've approved, they're really good," but then they want to go on and do some other things, and I'm not just sure that they're the right things to do at this time or in the right place. I think there's better utilization of existing properties than are represented here.
I agree.
I don't think this is the place where Walton ought to be building here.
I think it's a stretch to call it a plan.
Well, yeah.
I mean, this is really a concept, a kind of a, kind of a, we, we kind of wish someday maybe we could get something like this, but, or, or, I don't know, but I, I wouldn't call it a, a plan.
Well, I, I would make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission has heard the presentation made by whomever it is, whether it's Walton Communities or the organization that spoke to us tonight-
Canvas Planning.
Canvas Planning Group. We've reviewed it, we find it interesting, but we do not accept the premise that is discussed in, in this presentation.
Okay, we have a motion to pass on to the council that we not necessarily approve of this as a plan, but it was good information, or is that what, basically it, just good to know, but not necessarily a recommendation to approve it as a plan?
I think just a comment, yes, from us to that regard.
Okay, so I have a motion, I have a second? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of that, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next up, staff comments.
Well, I don't have any comments to bring tonight.
Okay, all right.
Wait a minute, we got a, we have a hand raised in the back.
That's right, he is staff. Come on now. The boss.
Keegan's there.
Name and address, please.
I'm Tom, City of Villarica. To answer one of the questions that has a specific answer, what the Housing Authority's doing now, they have five properties, and this is primarily focused on only one of them, but they are not taking applications and haven't been, so they are, through attrition, developing vacancies, and what they're going to do is play a shell game, moving people off of a site into another building to the, until eventually they get this site completely vacated and then they'll do the demo, so that's, that's what they're, that's what they're planning, and they've been doing that for some time. Another thing that I think was an issue is the relationship between the organizations. So, the Housing Authority issued an RFP looking for a private development partner, and they selected Walton. Walton intends to apply for a competitive tax credit for their project. In order to do that, they have a deadline to meet, which I think is maybe May one, and part of that application requires this, requires that the city in which it is applying have a revitalization plan approved by council. So, what Walton has done effectively is hired Canvas to write a plan for us to adopt, to check off the box. So, if the council approves this Tuesday night, what they're saying effectively is, is that we want to facilitate this tax credit application process, which would facilitate Walton redevelopment, and then what happens after that is a whole nother set of decisions. Is the zoning adequate? Are we going to require or encourage commercial on the front of the site? Is the site big enough with or without commercial? Does it make sense for Walton to build it at whatever number of units that works out to be, or is it too small? You know, I mean, all that stuff is going to happen down the road.
May I, along that line, so is Walton going to wind up being the owner of this project and then the landlord, or are they doing this on a turnkey basis for the Housing Authority who will continue to own and manage the property?
You're getting outside of my lane, so I'm going to tell you what I know, and then you can see if you can fill in the parts that I don't know. So, when, when we went to Walton Village, or when I went to tour Walton Reserve, which is off of Thornton, what, what I saw were three-story garden-style, grown-in, really attractive, ten or twelve acres developments or bigger. My understanding is, and this is where I'm getting out of my lane, right now, the program that the Villarica Housing Authority operates under includes the authority's ownership of the property and the federal assistance resides with the resident. The program that they're going to switch to, which allows this public-private partnership thing to happen, is called RAD, which stands for something that I don't remember, rental assistance, and in that case, the voucher is going to reside with the facility, and it allows this public-private partnership. So, my understanding, and I'm, I'm getting way out there on what I know, is that Walton is going to own and operate the property in partnership with the Housing Authority, who is still going to have a relationship with HUD. Does that help?
Yes and no. Who is the Housing Authority? Are they elected representatives?
No.
Who appoints them?
So, the council appoints the board, just like you guys were appointed, and they have a staff, so they have a director and an admin person.
But you say they own five separate properties in the city?
Right.
Now?
Right, there's two on Cleghorn, real small, one on the left, one on the right, when you're going up Cleghorn, around the curve, down the hill, there's a larger one on the right, which is Anderson, and then there's one behind City Hall, behind the old library, and then the Tanner property.
But that, which is the, the larger, the one that the current Housing Authority is on?
The Tanner site is, I think, far and away the larger.
So, that's probably the only one that's practical for Walton?
If they, if they were to do another one, they would have to acquire adjacent land or completely relocate. So, like in the case of the one behind City Hall, you've got that entire property to the west that's, that's vacant, so there's room to expand there, and then, and you know, there's other properties within the city that they could go to, but not, maybe not contiguous to something that they're already owned.
And so, at some point, the, the property there at Tanner is going to have to be deeded over to Walton or whatever entity they form.
You, you're way out of my knowledge there.
When this survey was done-
You can ask all that.
Oh, I'm sorry. When this survey was done, you, you might know this, was it put on like the city website for people to take? So, it was taken, okay. Because I just noticed that the millennials were a very small representation of the graph, so I just like picking on millennials, but I'm just kidding.
Again, I, I never saw it, and I am afraid-
That's what I was wondering, because if it was just the paper, you know, papers are-
It's still an official order.
It's, yeah, but that's, that's good for like-
Yeah. Put in your birthday.
Yeah.
A lot of, a lot of situations that the Housing Authority will keep the land, it just depends on the situation that it worked out with.
Well, again, it just strikes me funny that the Housing Order, Housing Authority owns something, but they're no different than this august group, and, you know.
Well, like, like our Development Authority can own land and so can the DDA.
Yeah.
So, they're like-
See, like, the Development Authority is similar to what we did over here with the Georgia Power Building, where we're kind of the landlord on paper, but they're in it, they, they take care of it, when I say they-
Y'all own it, though.
But we own it.
Development Authority owns it.
Owns that.
The city gave the Development Authority the money to buy it, but the title is in the name of the Development Authority.
Title's in the name of the authority.
And now, we're leasing it back from them and occupying it.
Yes.
Very crumblous.
It's not, it's not generally the practice for the city to directly own, you know, unbuilt land or vacant buildings or whatever.
Because we also have property.
Use a land bank, use a Development Authority. In our case, we have a public facilities authority that we could have used instead of the Development Authority. In that case, the board is the council, and they, and they don't ever act, you know, like, they haven't, I don't think they've done anything except something, would we, did we coordinate fiscal years with the city or something? So, that's the only meeting and agenda item they've had the whole time I've been here is they changed their fiscal year to match the city. is they changed their fiscal year to match the city. So you're gonna get another bite at this, you know, you know, as a, as a development project. This is, this is a compliance issue for the tax, tax credit application. But the questions that you've raised are all legit. You know, what are we gonna do about transportation? If you were in council meeting Tuesday night, they are again beating the drum about doing a traffic study, so we're gonna do that. And then decide, you know, how much of the op, of the responsibility we're gonna put on the developer to improve the road adjacent, you know, to their property? Are we gonna, what are we gonna do with Mirror Lake Connector? That's still something we're working on every month, trying to figure that out. We have already modified that to include a spur that would go to this site. You know, that would go into the hospital area. So that observation's right on point, you know, Old, Old Stone's not gonna cut it the way it exists. But neither is 61, I mean, cause it doesn't work now. You know, if you get stuck in that three-way stop, you know, you can be there a long time every morning and afternoon.
I think.
Did you see the backup on 78?
They have a front rack on 20.
I mean, this is too soon to present, I mean, I would think to change around. But one thing I was just looking at is that section where it was talking about previous plans is almost make that a, to me, um, an appendix. Or appendices in the back of this presentation. Because it's like you get in the middle of this and there's these other plans. Because what I noticed is like, like one section of the Villarica Downtown Master Plan is actually a part of this plan.
Yeah, yeah.
But not the rest of it, which is that Renaissance Plan. And it's almost like, this almost needed to be like part of the, with the term paper. And that's, this is just a point of references in the back. Cause it's like you get to the middle and it's like, okay, here's the Villarica Downtown Plan and here's the other one. And it's just, uh, once, when you present it to the council, that way it'll be, to be smoother, at, at least in your presentation, at least in your presentation, so.
All right, other questions? I know, I know all that's confusing that have dropped on you. But I wanted you to see it because this is, this is all gonna come back, you know, as a site-specific development in the future.
Well, it's possible that the Housing Authority then could acquire other land that they currently don't own, that would be much better suited to this objective.
Or somebody else acquire it on their behalf and, you know.
I mean, they're better.
Land swap, something, something, something.
Yeah, there's better, very, better places, it seems to me, than.
Yeah, the higher best use question really isn't germane to us adopting the plan.
But, but that's not clear.
When we get to the site-specific decisions about the development, then the question is, is that the best place for it to go? And if not, where and is it practical?
It seems to me that's the best way to present it to the council, that not to dwell so much. Because this is stuff we've already approved, everything that's in here. But your comments about this is needed by the first of May or something and what it's needed for and why is far more relevant.
Yeah, another question that you guys are going to be dealing with, I think, is that Bobby and I have probably entertained a half a dozen multifamily developers in the last year and I expect that to increase. And the que- one of the questions that you're gonna have to answer is how much affordable do we want to support versus market? Because it, there seems to be more interest right now in tax credit-assisted, affordable workforce kind of development, especially in some of the areas off the interstate, in the older parts of, of town that have not, never developed. So we're gonna have, we're gonna have to answer that question, how much of it do we want? Do we want a hundred units? Do we want 200 units? Do we want 300 units?
You can get as much as you are willing to subsidize.
Right.
Absolutely.
I guess it bothers me too that Housing Authority now is stopped, has stopped taking applications for some kind of a long-range plan.
Right.
That seems very inconsistent with, with the needs.
So all of a sudden, it doesn't seem so long-range. It seems like somebody's already decided to move forward and, uh.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I mean, they, they decided not long after I got here to move ahead with the RFP and to seek a partner. So they're working the plan.
I would think those people would be up in arms. They don't know about it.
No, people, people have applied and been told, people have tried to apply and been told they couldn't and know that there are vacancies and are like.
Yeah.
You know, what's the deal? So, yeah, I mean, there are people that are inconvenienced by it already.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, let's see where we're at here. All right, next up is public comments, otherwise known as open mic night. Anybody like to get up? You have up to 10 minutes to say whatever you wanna say? Any takers? Okay, no takers, public comment section.
Let me ask a procedural question.
Public comment section is closed, go ahead.
A, a procedural question about that.
Yes.
You say, members of the public have up to 10 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the public comment section of the city council meeting is held to a maximum of three minutes.
Saying.
And so I was wondering if we should consider modifying our policy to make it like theirs.
Hasn't exactly been overused here.
No, true.
Yes.
You're not the public.
That's right, you're staff, so that goes under a different category. Um, I haven't had a, the only time you wanna do 10 minutes, the reason why, uh, to me, why I would leave it, once in a blue moon, but Villarica's so developed. But in, when I used to be on the county zoning board, is when a subdivision issue would come up and there would be everybody out there. And then you would say, okay, we wanna give 10 minutes to the leader of that group and that way they have a, a chance to, you know, kinda get everything together. We just haven't had that, so. This is kinda like one of those old laws on the books, like you can't tie your horse in the front, but it's still on the books. So, but if you wanna change it, I don't even know how to do that.
I just, I'm throwing that consideration with a bullet there.
Okay.
It'll be whatever you say. You wanna say three minutes, you can say it three minutes.
Well, yes. But we do have it printed, so today we had to honor 10 minutes, so, okay. Okay, next up is adjournment. Anybody like to adjourn and get out of here?
I move for adjournment.
You have a motion and a second? Motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor raise your right hand. All opposed, can stay. All right, thank you all very much.